meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, including the use of AI note-taking apps, please notify the Chair. Seeing none, pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. The first order of business is to ensure quorum. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Dykens?
Present.
Mr. Metters?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
And the Chair is present. Is the working group meeting posted?
Yes.
Then probably we should have a determination of a quorum as well. So I'll call on you one by one.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Robin?
Present.
Rob? Pat?
Present.
Present.
I'm not the Chair. I'm present.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank. Thank you. We have one agenda item really substantively, but we do have public announcements and agenda item requests. This is standard call. Does anyone have anything tonight? I don't see anyone. And then, secondly, public comments on the business agenda, if you want to make them now. I assume most people would want to wait to hear the presentation. So we'll go right on to the business agenda, which is the Center for Active Living, CFA building working group recommendations and a vote. And with that in view, I'm going to turn to the Town Manager, who is joining us remotely, Jill Goldsmith, and she's going to make some remarks. Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we begin, I wanted to extend my appreciation to the members of the Center for Active Living Building Working Group for your diligent and weekly work since October 22. Through public meetings, a site visit, and careful review of design and cost information, you've helped shape a clear and balanced recommendation for the project, grounded in the intent of Town Meeting. My thanks to each of you, Stuart Smith, Pat Burke, Stephen Daniel, Rob Stello, Robin Zebra, for the time, expertise, expertise, and care you've invested in this effort, and for your collaboration with our owner's project manager, architect, and town staff. Your work has strengthened this project and set the foundation for decisions ahead. Thank you again for your service and for your commitment to the future of the Center for Active Living. Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. I guess I'm going to throw it back to you in a moment, but Stephen, did you want to?
Well, I was going to ask the members of the committee to introduce themselves, but since it's been done three times already, I think we can move beyond that.
Well, I think we should say who you all are.
Okay. Stuart, why don't you start us out?
Sure. Good evening. Stuart Smith, member of the Select Board and also a member of the Building Working Group for the CFA building.
Robin?
Robin.
Robin Zebra, President of the Friends of Chatham COA and member of the Building Working Group.
Rob Stello, just a builder.
Pat Burke, Chairperson of the Chatham Council on Aging Board of Directors and a member of the CFA working group.
Stephen Daniel, Chair of the Finance Committee and a member of the CFA.
Thank you. Thank you. And I want, on behalf of my board, extend our gratitude to the working group and to our representative, Stuart Smith, who kept, I know he kept me informed. I think he kept the board generally informed about what was going on here. So we look forward to the presentation. I'm going to, I'm back to Jill because I think you want to introduce the team and the presentation, I guess, guests from Terry Whalen or whoever's going to start it. So turn it over to you.
Thank you. So let me start with our owner's project manager, Rick Palmeroy, our architect, Kurt Raiber, and town staff. We have Leah Lacrosse, who's our Director of Community Services, as well as Terry Whalen, who's our projects and operations administrator. It's a little challenging for me to be remote, so I'm going to take your lead, Mr. Chair, and if you want Terry to introduce the staff report, or if you want to turn it right over to the working group to present their recommendation.
Which would you like to do first? Okay, we'll start with the working group, and I think, Stephen, you're going to present it?
Yeah, that's what we agreed this afternoon. So at the risk of repeating myself, I too would like to thank my colleagues on the working group. It was a terrific collaborative effort. I think we've landed on a place that will hopefully be considered attractive and prudent by Town Meeting and the taxpayers. And in addition to the members of the working group, as has been pointed out, our efforts were supported by Jill Goldsmith, Town Manager, Leah Lacrosse, Director of Community Services, Terry Whalen, Director of Principal Projects, Rick Palmeroy, the owner's project manager, excuse me, and Kurt Raiber at the team at Catalyst. So thanks to all you guys for the exceptional support of the initiative. The mission of the working group was first to independently analyze the Center for Active Living project, its goals and its functionality. Second, we were asked to make recommendations to the Town Manager and the Select Board on how to prospectively move this project forward. So those were our two North Stars. And in that context, we had two goals. First was to create a facility that would allow the CFA to function in the provision of services to Chatham seniors. Second, to be respectful toward Town and its taxpayers, using revenue thoughtfully to create the best value, while also creating a facility with an estimated useful life of 35 years. There has been a lot of question about the numbers, which have shifted around. So we thought it'd be prudent to just do a little trip down memory lane and figure out exactly how we got to where we are. So with that, let me attempt an explanation. Town Meeting voted in May of this year, as I'm sure everybody remembers, to allocate $5 million for the project. The vote was predicated on the use of conceptual drawings and using an estimated cost per square foot calculation. That approach, while appropriate in the terms of process, results in a preliminary cost assessment, which clearly exceeded as the plans were further developed. The vote in support of the project in May did allow the project team to move forward with more advanced development of schematic plans, more detailed, more information, but still not yet fully realized and developed. Those plans resulted in an estimated cost of $7.7 million. The project team then began the process of value engineering, that 7.7 figure, to see if it could get somewhere closer to $5 million, the estimated cost, of course, from Town Meeting, without compromising the utility or integrity of the structure and intended purposes. The result of the value engineering process, which allowed for the drafting of actual construction documents, resulted in an estimated project cost of $5.98 million. So following the presentation of that figure to the Select Board, it was determined by the Select Board that the functionality of certain elements of the building would be compromised as a result of the value engineering process and elements of the structure that were taken out or otherwise altered, or, excuse me, also otherwise not addressed. It was at this point that the Select Board, and I guess in conjunction with the Town Manager, elected to create the working group that presently sits before you. For context, the entire project team has held, I think, nine meetings now, committing collectively over 325 hours to the development of this project and tonight's presentation. In it, as you'll see, the working group unanimously agreed to adding back certain elements to the project to enhance its long-term functionality and reduce its long-term operating and maintenance costs. I'm going to hand it over to Rob now for a walkthrough, certain of those items, so we can present in a very fully transparent and comprehensive fashion why we're suggesting to add these things back in.
Thanks, Steve. You explained that real well.
Thanks, Steve. I think you explained that real well. I actually got on this committee just because I, you know, being one of the outsiders, making comments about the whole process, I decided to join in, and I really have a lot of respect for everybody we've worked on this committee. It was unbelievable how well everybody really tried to just reach the goals of being responsible, as he said, to the community, as well as, you know, you got to have a project that's going to be viable and work for the people, for a function to make this, you know, be a good project for what it's noted to be used for. The seven things that we put back in and everything was, one was the, you know, as you look at the added scope, you know, is the column in the cellar lobby, and we tried to put a little explanation. I'm not going to read it or anything, but I just, if you read it, I'm just saying that, you know, it's a very congested area. It's a place where you have an entrance door coming from the outside. It also leads to one of the big program spaces that's going to be used. There's an elevator entrance in that area, and there's also a staircase. And for people who look for accessibility and for, you know, walkers or any of those kind of things that are needed, and even for emergency personnel to come in, it just makes sense to put that column in and put a beam in. And the reason, another reason why it's good is because when you go through some of these other ones, the equipment and everything is on this job site. So looking at it from a building point of view, I mean, if you're ever going to do it, and you're going to do it right, while everything's there, the cheapest way you're going to do it is do it now. And the other thing we're concerned with, and this is a really good example, you say, well, gee, is it that important, that area? It really is congested, and it gets congested really easy. If you don't open it up, you know, it's back to the situation of saying, we've got a building. We made a decision in the town that we're not going to tear it down and build a new building. We've gone through all that process. We need to make this building as viable and as useful as we possibly can. And to me, it's a safety issue to begin with. On the second one, we have another structural beam. Again, we have all the equipment in this place, and there's column in this, this is in the supportive care program area, and they have two basement windows that are going to be enlarged in that area, and they're right beside where the beam has to be passed in. And there's, you know, with all the equipment right there, it's not that big a deal, really, to sit down and just go a little farther and just cut out the part where you've got to put the beam in and add it. This is also a very small confined area, but it fits the needs for the program that they need. But if you keep the columns there, you can't really move around the furniture. There's not really good access. If there's ever an emergency, trying to get in there, try to help somebody or whatever, it's just too congested with those beams. And, you know, having it open, and plus, if you're going to sit down there and they're going to put these bigger windows in, which is, I think, another safety factor is the idea of egress, if somebody can get in and get out, if there is a fire or something. It just makes sense to do it now, and also it gives you the more light to come in without the beams interfering with all that. So that's another one that we all felt was quite important. The third part that we had here was this idea about the column in the exercise room. And this, if I understand from the people who work there, is going to be for the exercise room, and it's also used a lot for people who've got some health issues, and they have people in there and try to help them and advise them. I mean, I don't even know how they could even function in that room without getting rid of those columns. Again, we've got two windows in there that should be enlarged. You need to get some light in there. I mean, nobody wants to sit there and work in a dungeon. And while that's there, putting this beam in, again, makes really good sense. There's also a lot of reconstruction going in this area to make it what it is. There's some bathrooms that are going in and whatever. And, you know, trying to work around this beam doesn't make financial sense. And also, for safety and other reasons, again, it really needs to be expanded at this point. And these beams are pretty critical from giving us, really, what it does. It takes a basement area and makes it into a full usable area now. That's what it does. And now's the time to do it. The fourth thing was the building envelope. This is probably one of the biggest things that I was kind of at. I realized that the, you know, again, you know, the windows are everything, you know, we need some new windows. Some of the ones that are there already have rot, have other leaking problems, stuff as we mentioned. If you really look at the plan really close and you read it all, my big thing was, you know, to sit back and go back with wood clapboard and paint it. I mean, you know how long paint lasts and how long it's going to be there, and if it isn't kept up, it's going to be rot, there's going to be more repairs. So trying to use maintenance-resistant materials, which are very common today, and also with the lifespan, I can guarantee you down the road, you're going to save money. Because it's going to, as soon as we get done with this building, if we don't do the whole building and everything, there's already repairs that are going to be done. And, you know, I think it's, the idea with the committee we got together was that we were trying to stop all the, you know, costs down the road, you know, because you always hear the same thing, now we're going to do this, now we're going to do that. We try to look at this as a whole project. And it needs it, it deserves it, and, you know, we don't want to step backwards doing this. So for the few windows that are left, the numbers of the materials that we're going to use, there's no other way, and I'd be glad to defend that if there's any questions on that as well. So that's what the building envelope is. You know, we're going so far, we might as well just go the whole way. And if we're going to put new stuff up, to go back with old materials, you know, like, you know, the wood and everything, doesn't make sense today. The fifth thing we had was the idea of the kitchen. Kitchen, you know, in all fairness, the kitchen's going to have some work done on it anyways. You know, I mean, if you take a look at it, it really, really needs an overhaul. To do this whole building and leave that kitchen the other way it was, I don't think that one is going to be as functionable. The few changes that are talked about making, and we're talking about redoing, does it add to the cost? Is it? Yes. But then, if you're ever going to do it down the road, and you really need it for the lunch program, you know, I mean, this is one of those things that we're shot sighted to leave it. There's no doubt about it. And you probably end up doing it later, and you end up doing damage to the pot you already did. And, you know, if you're going to start this building off to be really functionable, be something we can be proud of, to leave the kitchen would be, in my opinion, I think, was the committee, would be a no-win game, that's for sure. I also think it needs to be done as well as it can be, you know, to be functionable as well. The sixth thing was the ramp in the back. If you look at the landscape plan and everything, you'll see that most of the parking is onto the right side of the building. And it's almost all parking. It's not too good on the left, it's not going to be in the front. And there's a back door there that, you know, there was a ramp and stuff that they had, they took it out. But that ramp needs to be put back in. I mean, for access to that building, if you're coming from those parking lots, it's just really one of those things to try to navigate to get to the front door would be, I don't know how they do it, especially if it's inclement weather. So the, what's that? Oh, yeah, I was going to say, so the back ramp, you know, is where the doorway is. We also talk about, you know, where all the parking locates, and it's a, I don't see any way of having people access that. I think it's just opening for an accident if we don't do it. And I think everybody pretty much agreed on that. Number seven was the idea about, you know, the modular housing and the, you know, programs need to be kept up. They need to be functioning. There's no way to skirt that. I mean, obviously, you know, just because we're putting a new building up, the services that are needed don't stop. And so they need to progress. So I think that's the seven points that we had, and what our reasoning was. And anybody want us to add anything to that?
Yeah, I guess the only, thanks, Rob. I guess the only closing statement I would make is that there was a very strong consensus on the working group, that it makes considerable sense for us to spend an incremental $1.85 million to get this building right. We've heard Town Meeting not spending $13 million bucks. This is the time, no question, I think, on the committee.
Well, I think also some of the costs that we're going to put, like, for the exterior stuff, is going to come back as a savings to us, for sure, you know?
I also think that what we didn't touch on, and we talked about today, is the kitchen's not going to be a commercial kitchen, but it's going to be a hybrid kitchen, which will be better for the future if we do decide to do more meals. It'll be more easy to be accessible. We've moved some things around today, which I'm sure they're going to show you later. And I think the upgrade is very positive. And the other thing that I wanted to mention that didn't get mentioned is the relocation of the parking area. We have a current easement, and we met with the lawyers, and we are reconfiguring that area so that the CFA has its own parking area, and the condominiums will have their own parking area. It will no longer be a drive-through, and that made more sense also.
Good points. The only thing I would like to add, and it's on what Rob was saying, is the discussion that we had regarding the beams and pulling the beams out, having Rob there to say to us, well, you know, when I do a job, all my equipment's there, and it's easier to do it all at once, was it helped us really think through the process and how we could get there. Because not taking those columns out would really, we'd really be wasting our money if we didn't do that.
Stuart, did you want to?
Yeah, the columns were kind of one of the central issues to deal with. We did, when the town went to Town Meeting and got the voters' support by a large majority for the five million, the initial five million, we told them that we would be taking the columns out, but due to, you know, the constraints of the initial estimate, the initial group wasn't able to get there. I think it's important to point out that there are additional funds needed to complete the project correctly and to get us some longevity for the building. But those funds really were savings that weren't really savings. Those were going to be just postponed projects that we would have had to have done down the road, and the prudent timeframe to do that is when we've got the building torn apart. So yes, there's some additional funds needed, but you would have had to have spent those funds down the road, and we're getting a much better, more functional building and with more longevity.
Thank you. Unless there are additional comments at the present time from the working group, I'm going to turn it over to Terry. You want to make the introduction, and who's going to go first?
Yeah, so Rick Palmeroy is going to give, and I'll just give a couple of quick overview, but Rick's going to run us through the project budget, the cost details, and the master schedule. Then Kurt will take us through the nuts and bolts of what was just presented by the working group. We'll have a quick slide on another consideration of the project regarding sewer. And then the Director of Finance will also talk about the financing options.
Do you want to entertain comments from the, questions from the board during the presentation? Do you want to wait? What does the board feel?
I'll leave that to the board. I mean, if we can run through, but whatever.
Let's, Rick.
At your leisure.
Okay.
But I just wanted to give some context. You know, some of your questions, I think, we're going to go through in the graphical detail, and some additional detail on the budget and the schedule.
Okay. Good evening. Do you want to put up, which slide do you want to put up first, Terry?
Yes, we've got the four-column slide.
Okay. So very quickly, we'll talk about the progression of the budget. I think Stephen had alluded to it in
to it in the working group's memo. The column to the left is the conceptual budget that was approved at town meeting with the total town appropriation of $5 million. And then what you're seeing in the second column going to your right is the schematic design phase, which, an estimate was provided to us in early September, when, after we completed all of our programming, structural investigations, investigations of the building, and that's where that number climbed up to total project number of just under $7.7 million. The team immediately went into the value engineering mode to see what the cost drivers were and to determine what steps could be taken to get that budget down as reasonable as possible. And the presentation to the select board in October was the next column, which was the $5.9 or five, nearly $6 million budget, and that's when the working group was put together and we began our meetings. And basically, the process was peeling back the layers of the onion with the working group so that they could understand what our process was, and, you know, how the budget was created, and how the increases evolved. And we actually walked the facility and were able to explain the different areas and components. And from those conversations, and some of them were pretty lively, from those conversations, we were able to really get down to what the true mission was, understanding how the numbers got to where they were, understanding what we could do to try to control those numbers and drive them downward, and understanding what improvements would be more beneficial for the facility and the community. And that's where we landed with that last column, which is the budget you have in front of you right now. And it involves a lot of re-engineering of certain spaces that were cut back to create our cost savings, and then some add-backs, some add-ins, too, to avoid maintenance down the road. The, that's, that was, you have that in your package, I believe, to give you that progression. The differential between the first column and the last column is shown in basic figures for you, and you can see that the construction differential was about 1.2. There were some owners' project costs, soft costs. The net difference was about $263,000. A big part of that was we added in moving expenses. Some of the other increases were more beneficial for IT improvements and furniture fixtures and equipment. And a big number there is the owner's contingency. With the $5 million budget that was approved, the owner's contingency was minimal. It was $117,000. And, you know, normally you'd wanna be carrying a 10% contingency, and that number was insufficient. So working with the working group and collectively, we bumped that up to $500,000. So that's not to say that we wanna spend that money, but it has, it's a safety net for you. You're breaking, you're tearing into an existing building, and as Rob well knows, you work in an existing building, there's always unforeseen situations and always, always areas that once you open it up, you have to, you have to correct. So having that contingency or safety net is gonna be beneficial, and that increase was $380,000. Bringing our contingency to less than 10%, about 7.5%, but still a good, reasonable contingency. Again, the intent is not to spend it, but at least you have it there if you need it. And so this gives you the differential between where we began and where we're at right now. And the difference is just, it's 1.8 million, $1.9 million. This slide gives you an idea as to where the bulk monies were in construction costs, and then the added contingency. The beams, doing all of the structural work, the net cost is about $90,000. The building envelope is a big one. So when this project is done, all the windows will be new, all the doors will be new, siding, trim, and roof. So your envelope will be, you know, a 30-year, 35-year envelope, whereas before, even in the original plan at annual town meeting, was just to touch the areas that were impacted by the renovations. So it wasn't the entire building. So this is a big benefit to town. As Rob had mentioned, it's going to save in deferred, in capital maintenance and deferred maintenance in the future. We added in kitchen costs, and we put back the window wells and the entry vestibule and the second ramp to the rear of the site, which was important. So the total cost items that were increased above and beyond what was presented at the October meeting to the select board for the construction costs is about $433,000. And then the add of the contingency funds gets us, so the total differential for that above and beyond was, above and beyond what was presented in October, is the 823. I hope that's clear for you. This is what we're looking at for our schedule, and I'm gonna work off of my sheet rather than looking at the screen for this, because it, we tried to give you as much detail as possible without overwhelming you. But there are certain factors that need to take place in this project that we'd like everyone to understand. The goal, of course, we're here today, December 3rd, I'm working on the first line down, and we're gonna be doing our site plan approval in December and January, that's the second line. Our goal is to have the documents complete and ready to bid by the first part of February. We could have, if that's the case, we'll have a two-month bidding duration, and we'll have a bid in hand April 3rd. April 3rd is a key date, because by state statute, we have to award, from receipt of a bid to award is 45 days. So we're trying to time this so that we have the annual town meeting and the ballot vote completed before, we have it scheduled right now, so we're within 43 days. So the bid in hand on April 3rd. We would leave the month of April for any public forums, public presentations that would be necessary. We have a tentative date of May 11th for the annual town meeting ballot vote on May 14th. We would be hopefully awarding the contract to the GC on May 15th. Couple of key factors in order to, once you award the contract to the contractor, the clock starts tipping, ticking. Their bid has already been, they've already calculated their bid, they've got all their quotes or everything else, so the goal is to allow them to start as quickly as possible. So if we have a GC award on May 15th, we're assuming that it'll take about a month, a couple of weeks, May, June, yeah. We would be issuing a notice to proceed around June 1st. Before that time, there's a lot of things that have to happen. The trailer order has to be released. The lead time for that is six to eight weeks. We'd like to see that trailer ordered, released, you know, next week, if we could. But, you know, we don't want to get in a situation, we know we have a trailer now, but if we have a natural disaster, the first thing that goes is emergency generators and trailers. So we'd like to lock in those trailers for a firm delivery date. We've spoken with the trailer company, and we do not have a penalty if we, or we don't have to leave a deposit with them. We can release the order, give them a drop dead date, and so there's no cost impact at the town. We'd like to release that order no later than April 15th. Their lead time is six weeks. We'll have the delivery on June 5th. Temporary electric is another time-sensitive matter. To run the temporary power poles and to get the service to the trailers in the back, there is a lead time, we need to lock in that electrician sooner than later. If you, I think you all know that the springtime is a very busy time for contractors, and if we call them, you know, if we call them in June and wanna have service complete, we'll see them in August. So we'd like to release that order as soon as possible, but no later than May 1st. We're working, we will work with the electrician at this time. There's discussions about a deposit, but from our perspective, a deposit is not something that is acceptable, especially in municipal government, town government, so we'd work with the contractor. But nevertheless, we'd like to have that commitment in hand so that we know that we have service. So we're looking at a six-week lead time from the time that we order, but again, I'd like to order that sooner. We would have the temporary electric service complete mid-June, and then IT and networking would be in there to get the trailer set up. The next, another component is the move and the storage of items. The Council on Aging or the CFAL has a lot of items that will be used during the period of construction, and there's some items that will go into storage. Our recommendation at this time is to solicit a move contractor to handle all of that. They'll handle the move out, they'll take the storage, they'll store it for you in a controlled facility, and then they'll bring it back for you at the end of the job. So we'd like to get a move RFP out there sooner than later, and it doesn't commit you to anything, it just gets your quotes in order. But we, that's another contract that you need to lock in sooner than later, because they get very, very busy. Getting through the prep items, we look at the, getting the CFAL moved out, the prep would be from May 15th to June 15th, and I know Lea and her staff really don't need any prep time at all, they're ready to go right now, so, but I gave them a month, I gave them a month anyways, just to, just to be fair. And we'd like to see a move out at the end of June. Right before that, we could issue a notice to proceed first part of June, allow the contractor some ramp-up time, get his procurement out of the way, get his shop drawings and submittals ready to go. Mobilization, and we'd see a construction site right around June 1st. We've allocated 10 to 12 months for construction. We feel, we feel that we can accomplish it. We'd hope we could accomplish it in less time, but we wanna be conservative with this, and so we've allocated 10 to 12 months for construction. Also, a two-month commissioning and FFNE duration, net two months is overlapped with one month of final construction. FFNE is furniture, fixtures, and equipment. So we need to move everything in, we need to get the IT and computers and everything set up and ready to go. So we slated a move back August 1st of '27. We're gonna move on to a design presentation, but if you want, you have any, there's a lot of stuff coming your way, so if there's any questions on the material I just presented, I can do that first before Kurt gets into the design, if you'd like to do that.
Any from the board? I think we'll wait, we'll defer a public comment until completion of all the presentations. Anything? Yeah, Pat.
Just a question on the move. It says August 1st, 2027. Would that be the, is that the right date?
Yes, let's move back in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, somehow I got confused here where everything was the 26th. Oh, I forgot about those 10 to 12 months.
Yeah.
There we go.
We wish we could forget about those 10 to 12 months, but unfortunately.
I apologize.
That's okay. I'm gonna turn it over to Kurt, and he can talk about the design features.
Good evening, everyone. Kurt Raiber from Catalyst Architects. Once again, good to be here. Terry's gonna control the slides, so this will start at the site plan. This is our proposed site plan, and a couple of things are different from when we had a conceptual plan. The biggest one is that the parking lot on the right side or the east side has been kind of simplified into a rectangle, and it no longer passes through into the abutting condominium property. So we proposed to get more parking on our property to kind of create this simple rectangle, which is much easier for people to negotiate and pull in and out of parking spaces. And it puts the handicap parking immediately adjacent to the base of our front ramp, and then Terry, just above that is the new rear ramp, right there. So now, there's two ways into the building. If you're at the back of the parking lot, it's raining, you can go right up that back ramp and come in. And when we show you the new plan inside, we'll show you how you arrive properly into the welcoming lobby. Along the driveway that goes to the condominium, that is also, there's a separate lane of parking there, interrupted by a tree. There are gonna be paved parking there, usable by staff and visitors to the CFAL in front of the tree. Behind the tree is some, gonna be somewhere between three and five spaces that are gonna be signed for use by the abutter. They currently have four signed parking spaces, or painted on the ground, that they're reserved for the condo association. And that was created by a deed. So if we can, we're gonna look with our civil engineers to get a couple more new parking spaces created on the condo side of the property that would help us move that tree line, that proposed tree in that row back further, providing more parking spaces for the CFAL. Additionally, we are proposing a new line of parking and widening of the parking lot on the west side of the building. And then the driveway swoops around the back corner, yeah, down there, and that is gonna be the arrival and place to disembark and get back onto the shuttle van that the Support Day program uses. And those program participants will immediately enter into the building there on the lower level. And at the end of the day, that's how they'll leave as well. We created a new ramp on the left side of the building, right there, and that's to facilitate the Meals on Wheels program, where we have visiting, our volunteer drivers come in, they take their coolers into the building, load up, come back down that ramp, load into their vehicle, and go about their route. That new sidewalk is gonna wrap all the way around the building and extend back to the rear of the right-side parking lot as well. Some of you will remember seeing a plan that proposed some parking right in the center island of the front. We've looked at that. There's four little circles in this plan. Those are manholes to drain basins that are part of the storm drainage system for Stony Hill Road. They are actually very high structures, they would have to be dug out and lowered, rebuilt to facilitate parking there. So we're not showing this at this time just because it is a big undertaking to rebuild that drainage. But with the new rectangular parking lot on the right, we still have more parking spaces than we were proposing a year ago. So I think that.
Kurt, can I just ask you about the rectangular parking, if you can go back to that, Terry?
One more?
Okay. So the, on the right-hand side, the upper right, those four or five spaces behind the tree, those are going to be parking spaces assigned to the condo people?
Yes, right now, there's four parking spaces that are for exclusive use for the condo on the town's property, and there's a deed that goes along with that. So what we're trying to do is concentrate their parking onto their parcel or just a few left on our side, but in that last row, which is only accessible from their driveway, and would not be accessible from the internal driveway on our property.
Have we had consultation with the condo people? Is there any chance, is there any chance, or is there any practicality to those spaces being reclaimed totally by the town and the?
Yeah, I think for, just to build on Kurt's comment, and we did have some discussion, Kurt did mention that we're continuing work with the site engineering team to see if we can move those spaces predominantly in this area to avoid, you know, to get rid of that situation. But the condo association is very in favor of the key component of blocking or taking away the pass-through. And we will reconnect with them again with a more detailed plan and some of these other items. So, and as I think Robin mentioned at the working group meeting, we had Town Council Jake Talaman part of those discussions as well, and what we need to do, you know, he's reviewed the deeds, the plan, and basically, his recommendation, and when we get to, if, again, if we move forward with the recommendation, would be to put forward an article that will also include potentially the deed documentation that needs to be executed as well. So we had a good, you know, thorough discussion with council as well. So more to come on that, provided, you know, we get the go-ahead on. So more to come on that, provided, you know, we get the go-ahead on this, this recommendation.
Kurt, what's the total number of parking spaces we'll have, allowing for that, those three or four spaces to remain condo spaces at the present time?
I think it was between 42 and 45 will be ours. It all depends on how many of the.
Forty-nine in the draft.
And, and five of those are, or two of those are reserved spaces may become ours as well. So it, 45 to 47.
We currently have, what, 32?
Right.
Yeah, we have the unstructured area.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this would.
Correct, yeah. This, this will define also the area to formalize the parking, to maximize how people park versus, I wouldn't say willy-nilly, but, you know, however they park is not always the most efficient.
Thank you. Please continue.
We had a, we had a fair amount of talk about these parking spaces. And certainly, I think the committee was interested in getting all of the parking spaces that were assigned to the association on association property and having a clear definition. It really wasn't clear, but work in progress.
Thank you. You can continue.
Terry and I met on-site with the representative from the association, and he was very curious as to where the property line is and where, in fact, those spaces that he believes, you know, encumbered by their deed rights. So we flagged that on the ground for them with the help of our surveyor. And they were open to these subtle improvements on their side of the property, which, again, would be part of our project, but modest with that crosshatched area up there was an area where we would be adding some paving on their property and then restructuring the lines on their paving to maximize the number of spaces. But if we could get rid of one or two trees, we might be able to get eight where we show seven, and then two more on the other side, and they would have their 10. So we're working towards that.
Thank you.
I guess the next slide is the lower level, basement level. I guess he's going to expand it out, yeah. So here's the, the basement level plan, and the numerals are keyed back to the memo from the working group. So number one is removal of a column and insertion of a new steel beam across that welcome lobby area. Number two is a combination of removal of the column in what will become the senior adult supportive day program. Number two is mentioned in that same paragraph in the memo, and that was with the new deeper windows and the window wells. Those are going to be a prefabricated window well that actually have a stairwell built into them if someone had to come out that way or a firefighter had to go in that way. So that's in that room. Over in the numbers three is the new exercise multipurpose room, and we are already removing two columns there. But the new piece of steel is going to remove a third column and really make that room a lot more useful. And I think the other subtle changes to this plan is that the HVAC room 013, which is just above the number three on the right side, that is a new expansion of the mechanical room because we are adding a new water heater and some ventilation equipment that just can't fit in that room. Similarly, on the other end of the building, the, the new addition includes the program coordinator's office, which is a new space that we didn't consider a year ago. It's in the conceptual design. And the addition also extends down the left side of the building with the senior healthcare equipment storage room and the new, the foundations for the new ramp. So if we go up one slide or up one level, this is the main level of the building, and the crosshatched areas around the front and the rear of the building show the new sidewalk areas. The red numerals again correspond to the memo from the building working group. Number five is the reconfigured, sort of improved and upgraded kitchen. So when we looked at that in the budget, number one, a year ago, we didn't add that to the scope of work. Then we did add it in our schematic design. That was the budget that came in really high. We pulled it back out in our VE budget. But the working group wisely talked through this kitchen many day, for many meetings, and decided to, hey, we shouldn't finish this building and have an unfinished kitchen space. So this plan was absolutely set in stone a week ago, and then we changed it this morning for the better. And we, there was another doorway into this room. We decided to take that out, maximize that open countertop space as a pass-through to the corridor to make the best flow for people to, when luncheons and other meals are served here, people congregate in the dining room and then circulate back out to the hall, oftentimes in a buffet type of service, and collect their plates and then come back into the room. We also moved all the refrigeration equipment from the kitchen into the new Meals on Wheels office storage room. And that allowed us to add about another 12 or 13 feet of countertop and storage overhead on the wall to really make this kitchen more suitable for preparing luncheon meals or catered meals and plates for a group of 50 people that can now gather in the dining room, which is being expanded by eight and a half feet. So that was a really wise move. Number four points to a little broken red line that travels around about 50% of the building's perimeter. In our first construction estimate set, we were only improving exterior surfaces and windows and doors in the areas where we were actually creating additions or the work altered that face of the building significantly enough that it makes sense to rewrap that building with new siding, new corner boards, new soffit spaces. And where we were providing new surfaces, we went to the historic commission. We got approval for a cement clabbered product, which will be factory primed and painted, and as necessary, can be touched up, painted in the field. We also are going to specify a PVC lumber for the corner boards and running trim. Again, it will be painted because it looks better and it lasts longer. But these are materials, as Rob stressed, which will be lower maintenance for the, for the town to take care of going forward for the next 30, 35 years. So number four indicates that we have re-added that perimeter portion of the building to include new windows, new siding, new trim, so that now the entire facade of the building on all four sides will match with a brand-new finish. And from the budget sheet, you flip back a couple pages, you'll find that was about $190,000 add, but worthwhile. Number six shows a new wooden ramp and step coming into the building at the existing rear door. We will replace the doors part of the building envelope, but vestibule 104 in the plan, which is that first little room, that's new. Currently, that door drops you into the back of the office space, and it's not a great place for guests to enter the building. So we've closed the wall that enters into the office, and guests will come into the lobby and immediately can come down the page to the reception desk. We had put this in our schematic design back in June, July, and that was one of the embellishments of the project that we pulled back out when we realized that our project was so far over budget. In discussion with the working group, it was decided that that was important, and that should go, come back into the project. So this level plan, a lot has been thought out, and of course, dimensioned and detailed, and the path for the sidewalks and the ramps and the handrails are all now well down the road into design and are compliant. And this is a much better floor plan than it was a year ago and much improved from where it was just three months ago. The last slide on, for the floor plans, is the second floor. This didn't change a lot under the review by the working group. Building got tweaked a little here and there, but nothing but some simple simplifications. We had proposed moving some wall, some walls on the second floor. Come to find out after the structural engineer's review that that was really detrimental because that meant we were going to have to reframe the attic floor. So we went back and simplified the design of the second floor dramatically. Again, the conference room on the far right is, occupies half of the new dormer on the face of the building, which I'll show you on the elevations. The friend's office is also in that, that new dormer. On the lower-left side of the plan, in activity room 201, the, the right side of this room has a new dormer as well, which greatly increases the occupancy of that room and just the usability of it, because it won't have that inclined headknocker of a ceiling. And we changed some of the positioning of staff around a little bit since we were, first showed you that plan in January of '25. But it's all just subtle improvements on this one, but we haven't identified any additions here that the building, you know, working group added. Do you want to add something?
Yeah, do you mind if I clarify one thing? I just want to make sure that everyone is clear on this. What we're showing you now is sort of the refinements and add-backs as compared to what was presented to the select board in October. And sometimes Kurt will say, this, this hasn't changed at all. And I don't want anybody to misconstrue that with, in other words, the facility's not changing at all. The design hasn't changed at all since October. But the design of the existing, if you went to the existing facility plans right now and then looked at these new plans, you would see all of the changes that incorporated because there's an extensive amount of changes throughout. It's just that we've looked at two or three different iterations of it, and so this is just a progress.
The last two slides I wanted to show were the building elevations. And I think the last time we were here, we had, even on this sheet, the front elevation of the building shows two new dormers. The addition to, there's, you know, there's one there, thanks, Terry. That's the second one on that roof. And then the salt box addition to the right, to the far left on the first floor, that's the expansion of the dining room and the fire, the new enclosed stairwell behind it. The elevation at the bottom of the page is the east side facing that newer rectangular parking lot. And the last time we showed this drawing to the, the working group, and I think to the select board, we had most of the elevation of this building was, was just showed existing shingles to remain and existing trim to remain and existing windows to remain. We've now scheduled that to be, all those surfaces to be upgraded. The second page, again, the top of the page, larger drawing, is the rear side of the building. And there is an addition to the right side of the drawing, which includes the addition of the adult supportive day program director's office at the lowest level, the Meals on Wheels office at the main level, and then the shine office on the second floor. And then the, underneath that slope roof at the far right is the fire stair. Terry's, go ahead back to that lower level. We, the plan does include a little porch at the lower-level rear that covers about 16 or 18 feet of an existing walkway to the existing rear entrance. We thought that was important just as a place of shelter to close an umbrella for people that are arriving at the rear side for the supportive day program. At the top of the elevator shaft, we're going to take out the elevator louver, which is no longer code required. And when the elevator is modernized, that can go away. And that's the reason why the elevator's so cold all the time. And around the whole elevator shaft on three sides plus the roof, we will be growing the building about two inches as we wrap it in an exterior insulation sheathing board, which will also improve the temperature conditions inside that elevator shaft in the car. All the windows on the rear side have also been scheduled for replacement. On the lower drawing, this is mostly new construction on the left or west side of the building, including the ramp as a second means of egress out of the main level, but as a primary entrance for, and exit for Meals on Wheels drivers. So that's a quick run-through of the plan changes.
I just wanted to ask, picking up from what Rick was mentioning before about what was presented to us before the working group got, got to work on this.
Yes.
Right now, the building has just really one multipurpose function room, which has a couple of columns in it, as I recall. And that's on the second level. And the street level.
Street level, go down, yeah.
And you're going to, we're still going to be expanding that.
Yes. Yes. The dining room multipurpose room is one layer, one lower floor, yes, this lower-left corner.
Yeah.
This does say, expanded multipurpose room. And that the, the left third of that room is the new part of it. It's about eight and a half feet by 24 feet.
Can you remind us as to how many people that can accommodate at a luncheon, for example?
Well, now, we're taking out the column that was right here. We'll be taking that column out and putting a piece of steel across that room. And there'll be a second piece of steel that holds up the second floor above under the other line. But previously, it was hard to get more than four or five tables of eight in that room. So it was a struggle to get 40 people at a table. But with this new room, we show a configuration comfortably with six atops of 48 people sitting and dining with room for a lectern and a presenter and the TV on the wall for a lecture. So 40 to 53, 48 to 53 for dining, but for a presentation, if chairs were set up as lecture-style, it could be well over 100 people in that room.
Thank you. And on the first floor, this, the senior day program.
Yeah.
Slash multipurpose. So I think that is a storage area now. It's pretty much not usable. But that's going to serve as a multipurpose room on those days when the senior program is not functioning. Is that how that works?
Yes, and the senior day program currently meets at the COA three days, two, two days a week. It will grow to four.
Okay.
So one day a week.
That will be available.
Plus weekends, this room would be sort of available. And that's why it's really important that the other room be improved as well so that groups can gather there.
Okay.
And that's going, we envision, in the furniture plan, we show exercise mats and some exercise equipment, treadmills and bikes that can be in that room, but those could be pushed in the corner. And that could, room could be used for a number of things, and there is some traveling programs that come and use that room monthly.
Okay. Are there any questions from anyone on the panel? Okay. Who's next?
So I'm going to pull up the. Sorry, put the mic here. We're going to pull up a, a slide here. So we've got two more things to go over just for an additional discussion point that came up through working with the, through the working groups. Looking at all options for, with an eye towards the future, getting out in front of items. And we just decided this, did additional consideration, and it's this, it's a concept, and I'll maybe defer to Stuart for that, for more detail on basically accelerating the installation of the sewer line along Stony Hill Road.
Yep, and we, we had a fair amount of discussion about this as well. The original plan included about $60,000 or so to upgrade the existing Title V system. We thought that, you know, the town is trying to get people off of Title V's, and putting money into an existing one may be, you know, not as forward-looking as we'd like to be. This is on, it's, it's within, albeit at the edge of the Pleasant Bay watershed. So we thought it was prudent to consider getting rid of the Title V and applying those monies towards extending the sewer line, which currently ends in the area of Enterprise Drive in Stony Hill, and bring it down to at least the CFA building, hook the CFA building up to it. The advantage to this is we get the COA building off of Title V, which I think is a goal of the community. And also, it brings that sewer line down for the area neighborhoods, and the sewer line would have been coming down that road in the years to come anyway. So it does move ahead that project if the select board deems it appropriate. So it does move ahead that project if the Select Board deems it appropriate. But we do think it's prudent because of the things I just mentioned, and it's a stepping stones to deal with the area neighborhoods, which was going to happen eventually anyway.
And you've had some consultation with the DPW director?
We have, yeah, he came in a couple of-
And I know Robin did some research on this as well.
He came in and spoke to us a couple of times and was really helpful. So we do think that this is going to be advantageous for the COA building, but it's really going to be more advantageous for the area neighborhood when they start to get service for the sewer line. So we do think that it's appropriate to have it not directly associated with this article and project, but that it be a separate article for the Select Board to consider as a, as you would expand any other sewer line.
It would be funded out of the sewer program.
Yes.
I had something here, I think it's really important to mention that, you know, you're going to be doing a lot of extensive landscaping and doing a lot of stuff in the front. If we can, because there's going to be a timing issue, that if we can get the design and the plan, and if it's implemented maybe two years down the road or whatever, but if we get permission from the Health Department, you know, we could literally run all the lines and have everything in this project in this phase, which would be much easier than you would have to dig it all up later on either. So it would be, I mean, it'd be a cost savings that way as well, right? I mean, it'd be a big advantage to us.
It would, and it is somewhat contingent on the Board of Health giving permission to this, but there's precedent for that, that if they feel, I think we're a reliable resource, that we're going to extend that sewer line, that we would be able to use the current system until then.
It probably makes sense at some point, as in if this project goes forward, to touch base with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, to get them on board.
Sure.
Support this. I think they would be very supportive of it.
Good idea, yeah.
So Terry can talk with Rob about that.
Yeah, and again, we'll, like I said, we'll follow up with some proposals for a separate article.
They meet monthly and get an agenda item before them at some point. Okay.
Yeah, and then the final item, we have the Director of Finance on, and just to kind of, in your package, you had her analysis that I think you had previously, and just a quick summary, I'm going to pull up a summary slide right now, and then Carrie, I'm hoping you're out there?
There she is.
I am, I'm there.
Okay. Great, sorry, I couldn't see. So I'll just turn it over to you for a summary of your recommendation for the financing, the fiscal proposal, and just a quick high-level review of the financial impact.
Okay, thank you, Terry, I appreciate that. Carrie Mazzaro, Director of Finance. After reviewing everything, and this early in the budget cycle, I am recommending a capital exclusion. For those of you who do not know what a capital exclusion is, it's a one-time payment for, it's above our levy, so it's a prop two and a half. It does require a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and it also requires a two-thirds, I mean, sorry, a ballot question, similar to a borrowing, except for it's just a one-time versus borrowing for many years, which you have interest on. Also, for this, I am putting towards this project around $500,000 of free cash, and there is roughly around $30,000 of closeout articles to go towards this project. So estimating around 1.5 million for the capital exclusion. Again, this is a one-time impact to the tax rate, it's around 12 cents, and at the current valuation of what we have, for a home valued at 1.7 million dollars. A capital exclusion is good for one-time purchases, such as purchasing major equipment, making capital improvements to municipal buildings such as this, and other items like infrastructure projects, and supporting large non-recurring items. With the current valuations, as you can see on the screen, for a home that's valued at 1.5 million, it would be a one-time payment of $185 impact to the tax rate, to the tax bill. For a home valued at 1,750,000, it would be $215 more. 2 million, it would be $246 more. 2.5 million dollar home would be $307 more. If we did a borrowing for 1.5 million, at estimated amount of 4% for 20 years, we would be saving $744,000. If we did a 15-year borrowing, we would be saving potentially around $574,000. This is a, similar to raise and appropriate, it would be the same type of thing, except for it's above our tax, our excess levy capacity. And again, because this is early in the budget, we really aren't sure exactly where we're going to be falling for that, and I'd rather not impact our capital plan for this at this time. But if I can find other funding sources, this, the 1.5 could be dropped down slightly. But this is what my opinion at this time, yep.
Carrie, this, your recommendation is not something we would have to act on tonight, right? We would be thinking about this-
No, you don't have to act on it tonight. Yep, we're gonna, I can bring it forward during the budget season. I'll have more closer numbers for everybody as well, but once we get into the budget season, I'll know exactly where we're going to be falling.
So it probably doesn't make sense to act on it tonight, or I don't want to put words in your mouth, or do you want some, are you looking for some direction from the board on this point, on this concept?
I'd like to know if this is something that you would consider.
Okay, all right, thank you. Terry, just a-
You're welcome.
Thank you. That concludes our, again, I appreciate us letting, run through, I know we presented a lot of information, but again-
I appreciate it.
We have the team, the, obviously, the working group and staff can answer questions as well.
And I appreciate that the information was focused on the work that the working group did beyond what we heard about in October. And one last call to the panel, and we can always ask questions later on, make comments, otherwise I'm going to throw it open for public comment. Stephen?
You know, I just like to point out one thing. There's been several observations about prospective savings on maintenance costs, but I think we would be imprudent not to highlight operating costs as well, with the new building envelope, new wrapping, new windows, systems, et cetera.
Yeah, good point. Okay, if anyone in the audience or online wishes to speak, need to go to the microphone or raise your hand online. No one. I'm sorry, Brian Phillips.
All right, for the record, Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. I've attended all of the working group meetings, and I'd just like to say that they've done a really good job, and it's really impressive of how, you know, people in this community who care about it, you know, did such a good job on, you know, on this, because it seemed like it was kind of a mess, and I could tell that they're very passionate about this, and I don't know if I can say much more about that, but, because I didn't even say anything to the third meeting, you know, they picked up on the kitchen and, you know, all sorts of stuff. The kitchen. So, you know, I've been pushing for, you know, a lunch program for two years. I understand if it's not there yet. By the third meeting, I was pushing for more, you know, equipment that would be, you know, better suited for, you know, a kitchen. At this point, I guess I'm just hoping that it can be constructed in a way that, you know, pieces can be added on in the future. And I was kind of wondering, because, you know, we live in a community where there's a lot of very talented, you know, chefs and kitchen managers and, you know, restaurant owners, that if, you know, we could add, because the kitchen never came up, you know, was not really discussed or, you know, a part of the project. So if maybe, you know, we could reach out to some of the, you know, restaurant owners or, you know, kitchen managers to, you know, suggest some things to the CFAL group, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one online? All right, I'm going to bring it back to the Select Board for discussion. We do have a recommendation in the Town Managers and Staff memo, which I will read. It is respectfully requested that the Board concur with the working group recommendation to keep the project moving forward in a manner consistent with the primary design objectives of the project proposed in the conceptual plans by continuing with the bid-in-hand approach and authorize the project team to continue moving forward with completing design development consistent with the CFAL building working group recommendations for the 2026 Annual Town Meeting. So the goal will be, would be to authorize the project team to continue with the design work, put the bid together, get the bid out, get the bid back. We'll have that number in time for town meeting. We would work with the Finance Director to determine the appropriate amount of the capital exclusion, if that's the direction we go in, and so that's before us for consideration. I'll open it up. Mr. Dykens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just got to thank the working group for an excellent job. I also thank our staff working with the working group for one of the better presentations I've ever had as a Select Board member, to be honest with you. The way you numbered the plans back to the recommendations was brilliant. The way it was laid out so that we could see where the beams were, where the poles were, if you will, and where the beams are going, because that was a real crawl, you know, we were really, really disappointed that when the iteration came back, the second iteration came back, that the poles were still there, the support beams were still there, I should say, in the middle of the rooms, where we thought that was one of the most important concepts to deal with, to make the building functional, fully functional. We have a long and storied history in this one. There's no one in this room that doesn't realize we've struggled with this one. I won't go into the deep, dark history. However, I think we're at a place where we can present the town meeting a plan fraught with common sense, as long as it meets the functional needs of the COA. If it's meeting the functional needs of the COA, I think this group has done a remarkably good job in making the improvements to the last iteration that make this a complete and smart thing to do. Doing the envelope now is a smart thing to do. Getting steel beams in there instead of the, I struggle with the word, but the poles in the middle, poles in the middle of the rooms that are supposed to be functional for dining and activity and stuff is a smart thing to do. To attack the sewer now is a smart thing to do, and to prepare the sewer for the future, for future engagement. Financing plan is a smart thing to do. A one-time debt exclusion to do a major, quasi-major project, 1.8 million dollars is nothing to scoff at, is a smart way to finance it and get it out of the way so it don't incur future interest costs. So I'm tickled. I'd be more tickled if it was a gleaming 13 million dollar structure, I mean, but you know where I am on that one, and that's history, that's history. But I think we're in a good place right now. We have a very common sense approach to dealing with this building, and that's where we are. I would, if there's no, if there's no cost to ordering the trailer or teeing up a trailer, there's no downside to that, I'd lock and load that now. I mean, why wait? There's no, if you don't have to put money down and you're not, you can cancel. I get them in a queue, I'm familiar with getting trailers on projects, and you do need a little lead time, you need lead time for, you know, electricity most notably. Two-thirds vote, we'll see, that's, I think it's up to town meeting to weigh in. I think what we ultimately, should we abide by the recommendation that Jill has made to us or the staff or that this working group has made to us, I think we'll hopefully hear in a positive way from town meeting, even though it's two-thirds. Those are my thoughts. I did have one, you answered the question about the contingency, I saw that skyrocket, but you guys answered that. Plus, I think there's still question marks about supply chain in the near, you know, still out there, so who knows what kind of buffer, if you will, we might need for supply chain. But I didn't see any numbers related to the parking improvement, so we, how are we going to finance parking? Is it in these numbers at all, or, okay, I just didn't see it, it didn't jump out at me, and then I'll be quiet. But I really do appreciate the effort, really, excellent effort.
From the end of August to the, roughly the third week in October, we had done two estimates. In the original estimate, the parking was included, and the second one, we broke it out as per potentially bidding as an alternate, and it was one of those things like, oh, could we pull that out if we needed to? It's all back in.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Thank you very much, really, thank you. Stuart?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Just a couple of, it's been said, but I want to say it again. The bid-in-hand approach to this is, it's a sea change on how we approach projects. I think it's, personally, I think it's going to reassure town meeting that it's a real, it's a real number, and I think we'll be more successful not only with this time, but in future projects. And I'd also ask that the Select Board endorse keeping the working group in place until the completion of the project, because we have some outreach that we want to do with the public and more explaining.
And as an advisory body too, as an advisory body to us as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, at least through the end of the project.
But I know that the working group, from your recommendation, wants to educate, help educate-
Yes, we do.
-the public.
Yeah, I think that's an important part of the, you know, the process. And the other thing, and it can come up at a later date, but I think that hopefully this demonstrates the value in having a permanent building maintenance oversight, whatever you want to call it, committee. We used to have one some years ago, and it may be time to consider bringing that back. I think it's been very beneficial.
We can learn from this, I think. Shereen, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. First off, thank you to the working group for your due diligence on this, and the explanation as Jeff said was really helpful in, in looking at what I thought, you know, when we were presented the initial project, it was kind of like a sad, okay, you know, this made me feel better. You know, the explanation of the beams being for safety reasons, providing more light in some of the rooms was really, really helpful. I feel much better about working space around the activity rooms and things like that. The idea that the outside of the building is going to be completely upgraded is really, really smart. The kitchen, yeah, I can hear Brian, you know, you, a good shiny kitchen would be super terrific, but there's been so many concessions that have had to be made around the entire building. The fact that this is a hybrid, a modest, but it is an upgrade, and I think it's a smart way to address a kitchen without going deep diving into the weeds with it. The explanation was logical, it's a more functional and better building, as Stuart had mentioned before, the idea that the maintenance is being deferred into the construction, we have a cost savings, the searing is great. Financing, as Carrie presented, I really think is really, is fine, the path that she's going in. I really hope that this is going to be our last time dealing with this, and I, the fact that the public is quiet and I think it's been well explained, and there's a lot of confidence that the working group has brought to the table, and hopefully we will have a successful town meeting with us. Thanks.
Thank you. Cory?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to repeat a lot of things that have already been said, they don't need to be repeated. One thing that does need to be repeated is a great thank you to the working group. This is, this is how we get production input, people step forward, give their expertise, give their input, you know, roll their sleeves up and help us. It's a collective effort, and, you know, when I first heard that we were going to do some budget engineering, I was really nervous what we were going to carve out of there, and where, you know, after this very, very long road, have a building that would be shortcomings and subpar, but the group has identified key issues. The beams are significant issues, functionality, safety, structure, you, these are key things. And I commend the group for identifying them and sticking to their guns and saying, this is what really needs to be done. And I think- And I think they've done their due diligence, it is our turn to do our due diligence, we're going to prepare this for town meeting, it'll be up to the voters. I fully hope that we can get the support needed to finally put this thing together. I also hope that, and one thing we haven't really spoken about little much about tonight, but the continued efforts, the promotion, the communications, and a lot of the necessary elements with the temporary transition during the construction, the community building, that is going to take a lot of support. It's not going to be easy, but it can be done. But that's going to be continuing conversations and efforts and outreach. So I feel we're in a much better space than I thought we were going to be in a couple months ago. I'm very supportive of this, and I'm very happy to see this move forward, and I see a light at the end of the tunnel, I really do.
Thank you. Well, I want to also, once again, commend the working group, because you did exactly what you were asked to do, and, which was to identify those elements of the building that needed to come back in, and come forward with, as Jeff said, a very common sense solution. In terms of a couple of the particulars, I like the fact that you're going to replace the entire envelope of the building. It's with, I guess we would call it cement board or hardy board or something like that, and not shingles, so they'll have a long life to them. And for me, from the very beginning, the removal of the columns was the sine qua non for this project, and it's finally good to see them all go. When this is completed, it will be 1,000 times better than what we have now. And when town meeting voted the $5 million, the vote was 84% in favor. So they, they liked this concept, and I'm very supportive of going back to town meeting and asking them to fund what remains to be funded in order to make this meaningful and lasting, and to save money in the long run. I also think that the Finance Director's proposal for a capital exclusion makes a lot of sense, because it saves hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. Yes, we do get hit. My house is right in the middle, I'm going to get a couple hundred dollars extra on my tax bill, but that's, you know, what it takes to make something happen. So I'm going to support this, I'm going to support sending it to town meeting. I would ask if anyone on the board would like to offer a motion to support the recommendation of the staff with the addition that we endorse the capital exclusion approach for funding as recommended by the Finance Director. Does someone want to offer that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Matters?
Absolutely, aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Five to zero. That's unanimous. I think we have completed, and I want to thank, I want to thank our staff and the consultants as well. It's been a long, long project. And the Council on Aging Board, many of whom are here, and members of the Board of the Friends of the Council on Aging as well. So with that, I'll take the final motion for the evening.
Hey, Dean, just one question. Do you, does the board wish to take any action or consideration of the standalone capital article for the sewer? The intent was, I think, from the working groups-
Would we do that this year? Is that the plan? I'm happy to-
Yeah, that was, that was part of the plan. I don't know whether you wanted to do that during the budget process, or now, now-
This is to sort of expand what Rob was saying, to do the work to sort of lay the stubs or whatever you want to call them, onto the street.
Get the drawings done and design, so we can get concrete numbers and, you know, and also it helps planning the project itself.
What we could do is take a vote to ask the staff to develop a warrant article to come back to us, they'll have numbers for it, and get some, run it, review that with the department and with the-
Jill wants to weigh in, but yeah.
Yeah, Jill, do you have something to say, you want to say on that?
I think that's perfect, and we'll also, for this CFAL project, craft the article so that it won't have a dollar amount, so when the bid-in-hand comes in, we'll be able to offer that as a motion. So just a technicality on that, so yes, we'll be happy to present.
So there'd be two articles that you're going to bring, one on the CFAL and one on the sewer?
Yes.
Okay. And the sewer, we should make sure we, when, by the time you bring that back to us, that we run that by the Water and Sewer Committee to get their endorsement of it, or the Board of Health or whatever. But that's no different from what we did on, on the project anyway. We had people, some of them, I think, may have in advance ran this, put the stubs in before the line went in the street. I think in some instances, that might have occurred.
Oh, yeah, I think that that's, I think it's fairly common.
So, you were going to say something, Stuart?
Uh, no.
So, well, we should have a motion to instruct the staff to, the town management staff, to prepare an article for the sewer connections as outlined by the working group.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, I'll take a vote on that. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, anything else? Do we need anything to-
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Wait one second. Do we need anything to encourage the board, the committee to continue?
I think it would be helpful, because it's not-
So I'll offer a motion that the, that the working group continue to, continue in existence to work on education and information and promotion of the project.
And engagement in the-
Engagement.
-end of the construction project, I think would be.
We'll add that into the motion.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's take a vote on that. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now we'll entertain the motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned at 8:03 PM. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, you guys.